Okay, we're gonna open the Monday, March 5th, 2018 Board of Selectment meeting at 6:33. Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Okay, I don't have anything for public comments, so we'll read the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-35 in the amount of $151,048.3.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-35 in the amount of $1,191,966.99.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Breakdown?
Yep, so this week is mostly education. The total of the three schools, we have an assessment for all three this week. Essex North Shore is 111,000. Penn Tucket is 772,000. Woody Ear is 143,000. The Light Department is 69,000. Water and Sewer at 10,000. The Town Generalvilles are just over 30,000. Our employment withholdings is 30,000. And snow and ice at 25,000. So, education alone was over a million dollars.
Wow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, moving on to appointments. We have the appointment of Mary Hohenstein, Steinstein? Stein? Of Salem, Mass. to the position of library assistant effective March 7th, 2018. The position is for 18 and a half hours a week at a starting pay rate of $12 an hour, subject to a successful quarry check. Can you go up to the podium, please? It'd be painless. So, I looked over your information. It looked like about the last 15 years or so, you worked mostly with children and not in a library setting?
Correct, correct.
Do you think that there's any drastic changes that you need to be aware of going back into a library setting? Since it's been a number of years since you've actually worked in that setting?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I'm familiar with different areas of library procedure. Checkout, some like cataloging.
So, not much has changed?
Loaning book, I think it's all, yeah, pretty similar.
And you live in Salem, Mass?
Correct, yes.
And you're okay with driving here?
Yes.
That's not gonna be an issue?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? Bill, do you have any?
Good.
Lisa?
Ed?
No.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mary Hohenstein to the position of library assistant effective March 7th. 18.5 hours per week at a starting pay rate of $12 per hour. And contingent on a successful quarry.
One second. If I had any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Painless.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on for discussion and possible vote, we have Claire Walsh to present the Historical Society's 2017 annual report on Washington Hall. How's the, ain't no crutches this time? Nice. Things are good.
Are these both working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, 2017 at Washington Hall was our second year for being open for programs. And we felt as a group that it was a great year. We had our house tour, our fourth house tour since 2000, which was really good. We had nine houses that went from 1702, which is, that was Bill's house, actually, to 1900. And we took a 1900s house because we felt as though we could show people how the architecture had changed, you know, in increments. Because we had all sorts of styles of houses between these years, so, and it worked out well. It really did. So, that was on May 6th that we did the house tour, so that was the beginning of the year for us. In June, we had John Crowder, who's an appraiser locally, and Elaine Drinkwater, who owns an antique shop in Haville. Present an antique appraisal road show for us. And truthfully, we should've had three appraisers. Mrs. Drinkwater was not an appraiser, so it was all resting on John to do the appraisal. So, we were there for quite a while doing appraisals.
Did you have a lot of people bring stuff in?
We had 75 people come in. And some people went away because the place, you know, I mean, it was full. And it was getting on in time, like 8:00, 8:30. We were there till 11:00, so it was a little late. But we're gonna use a different group this year. Same month. I think month, the month of June is good to do that kind of thing. In July, we brought back the Monument Square Brass Quintet for another year. We think that because it's July, and it's vacation time, and it's hot, it's probably not a good month to have a program. So, what we're gonna do this, this coming, or this year now, we're going to start in April instead of May having programs. And we're not gonna do a program in July. So, we'll be closed for programs July and August. Because there's no AC in there, it's hot, people are away, so it probably wouldn't work out for all those reasons. So, then in September, we came up with this idea of having some people that grew up here in Groveland talk about growing up in a small New England town. And we had eight natives of Groveland talk, and they did a great job. We had 54 people come in for that. So, that was well liked, well attended. And I'm not sure what we're gonna do in September next year, but it'll, it'll be something, something good. October, Pine Speedway reunion. And the sun was out this, this past year, which was fantastic. Because two years in a row, we had torrential rains practically. And we had a tent that leaked a couple of years ago, so that wasn't very good. But we had about 50 race cars, and people just have a ball at that reunion. You see a lot of people that grew up here in town, or grew up with the racetrack. And they can't say enough good things about what we're doing with that. Because we're bringing all these people together that were really trying to beat each other out, you know, on the racetrack years ago. And probably do bodily harm to, you know, at least their cars, anyway, not necessarily the people. So, that was a good month. And then in November, on the 19th of November, we started the first Festival of Trees here in Groveland. It was a new experience for us, and fortunately, we had someone who loved to decorate, Marge Freer. And she did a fantastic job on those trees and wreaths and, you know, I just can't say enough about what she created. And she had another person from the Historical Society, Janice Coulter, who helped her a lot with this. So, and then we had a, a group that helped. So, it was a very labor-intensive situation, but it ran from November 19th to December 2nd. So, it was long two weeks. The raffle was done on the last day. And the people, the next day, came up, picked up their trees. And some of them were kinda big getting out the door, but they got 'em out. So, we had a total of 319 people at the Festival of Trees, which was pretty good, we thought. So, we're hoping to do another Festival of Trees this year. It's gonna be a little different. You know, you always change things after you do things the first time. I can remember the first and second house tours that we did. They're different. You, you just learn with these experiences that you have. So, as far as totals went, we had 464 people attending our programs at Washington Hall, which is up. Last year, we had 319. So, that's good. 28 people, in addition to that number, 28 people visited Washington Hall on Sundays. From the beginning, when we did the house tour, till the last weekend in December. We had that building open for people to come in, to look at things, to talk to us, to give us donations of things that they've had in their homes, or stored in their attics, or just didn't know what to do with them, but they belonged in Groveland. So, you know, we, we do have more added to our collection of things that will be on display in the future. So, we had a total of 492 visitors to Washington Hall, all, all in all. And last year, it was 319. So, that's an increase of 218 visitors from last year. Okay, so, I'm just gonna throw a couple of things in there. We started a Facebook page for the Historical Society in June. And as of today, we have 86 members on that Facebook page. And they're, you know, a lot of the people that are on it are people that are townies. They grew up here in town. They have old pictures of when they were in school, or just old pictures from places that they worked in Groveland. So, it's pretty interesting to people, you know, like a lot of us, who didn't grow up here. And currently, we're working on a website, and that's going, that's gonna hopefully be done this year. We're trying to aim for the spring to have it done. Not quite sure it's gonna get there, but we're making a lot of progress. A company called Crystal Vision in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, is, is putting it together for us. Because we tried doing it, you know, a couple, a couple of people tried doing it. And you really need professional people doing that stuff. We came to that conclusion. One last thing I'd like to talk about is, and it's not the Historical Society, it's the Historical Commission. We received a grant through CPA and Mass Historic last year. And we did a survey of 125 historical homes. So, that's added to all the ones we've done in the past. And in order to finish up the survey of all these historical places in town, we're gonna have to do one more. But it's, we're not doing it this year. So, probably next year, we'll put in for it and try to finish all that up. And so, we're gonna start in April. Two months. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Bill?
Yeah, how much money does it cost you to run all these programs and things like that?
Depends. The one on Groveland, growing up in Groveland, we didn't pay the people. We gave them plants, you know, as a token of our appreciation. The Philharmonic was $400. The house tour, we gave gift certificates out to each homeowner. So, that wasn't, you know, a big expense. It's time and, it, it's really labor-intensive. That and the Festival of Trees, a lot of work, you know? And frankly, I, sometimes I don't know how we get it all done, but we do. The Pine Speedway reunion, that costs us some money. We do have a few sponsors for that, which is very helpful. Because we wouldn't be able to do it. And I told the people that helped me do this a few years ago, I said, you know, we can't continue to put all this money in and not get something back from the Pine Speedway. I mean, I love doing it, and I like to see all these happy people, but it's money. It's a lot of money, and, you know, we only have so much to work with.
How do you generate revenues?
Do you know what we have?
I'm asking.
Okay. Do you know the Knox Building?
The Knox Building?
Mm-hmm.
No, not familiar with that.
No? Okay. That was our first home, and it's on the court, on the edge of Shanahan Fields. Okay? It's a little building, gray. It was Dr. Doc's dental office. It started off as a millinery store, and then a grocery store, and then Dr. Doc bought the building. And then in 1990, he wanted to put up a new building. So, instead of paying to tear it down, he donated it to the Historical Society. So, we use that as an office. And for little programs, it's, it's like a one-room schoolhouse, smaller than a one-room schoolhouse. So, once we got going on Washington Hall, and we got that done, before we opened it, we said, you know, we have to generate some money to keep the hall going. Because there's insurance, there's utilities, we need to, you know, pay for whatever programming we need to do. We've got secretarial supplies. So, there's a, you know, little stuff here and there. And we did agree, when we started this whole thing with Washington Hall, that we would pay for whatever needed to be done to it for repairs, okay? Now, the lift has to be inspected by Garaventa, which is the lift company, every six months. And we have a contract with them to do that, so that we make sure that it's working properly. If it's not working properly, and they have to replace a piece to it, or a part, then that's gotta be done. You know, we can't afford to have something broken in that, and it not working properly. The building inspector came last year. He hasn't, well, no, it was the year before. They didn't come this past year. I'm still waiting for them to come. So, but the year before, he said, we really need a rail on the front of the building. Even though it's just a, an emergency exit, okay? We don't use that as a main entrance. The main entrance is in the back of the building. So, that was $800, $900. We just did that this past year.
But Claire, your funds come from CPA, CPA, do they not?
I'm sorry?
Where do your, I don't see you in the budget, so forgive my ignorance. Your funds, I'm assuming, come from CPA, correct?
Well, we have rent out of that. I nearly finished my story on the Knox Building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we turned that into a one-room apartment. Because it was small, and it was gonna be empty. And I don't like to see empty things. And I had a friend who's a realtor come over and look at it, and I said, can, can we make an apartment out of this? And she said, yeah. So, we scraped together. We had some money in the bank, and we had some in the checking account, and I donated some money because I was getting killed with my taxes while I was still working. So, we spent $15,000 on turning that into an apartment. So, we get rent from that every month. So. Pardon? Yeah, if we, you know, like, the one in September, we didn't charge for. That was, that was free. And it's kinda nice, really, to do something that's free at some point in the year, I think.
So, you pretty much operated break even every year? You, you spend just about as much money as you take in, so there's, so it's a wash, or you say you bring in a little bit more, then you'll spend a little bit more?
It depends, Bill, on what the bills are. You know, like, right now, you know, we're giving some money to this website person, you know, in increments. And we had to straighten out some accounting things, so we had to pay for that. So, those are extra things that we wouldn't normally see. But, you know, like, right now, it's a wash for last year. Even though we, we did pretty well. We did well on the house tour, we did well on the Festival of Trees.
So, in a typical year, you break even, so there's no, you generate just as much as you, as you spend?
We're not in the red, you know, for, for any year. Even, even this past year. It, it's tight, but we're not in the red.
Good.
So, so I'm happy.
Me too.
Lisa, anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Claire, didn't you have, didn't you have a program over there for the younger kids of stories? Or was that the year before?
We had the Bagnell School Carers there the year before. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that might've.
It was in December.
It was something in December, but I don't even know what it was. And then you had, John Cole did a talk on.
Architecture.
Was that the year before, too?
Yes, that was architecture. It goes fast. Yeah, yeah, yeah. John, John did a good job on that. And, and he only charged us, I don't know, $100 or $200. I mean, it was, it was a good deal. So, anyway, we're educating the people of Groveland, we're educating ourselves as we're going along. I went last Thursday and talked to the kids at the Bagnell, at the Penn Tucket School. They're doing a documentary on Groveland. The kids from Groveland are doing Groveland, the kids from Merrimack doing Merrimack, and West Newbury's doing West Newbury. So, I talked to the Groveland kids, and they've got two weeks to do it all to get, you know, put it all together. So, I, I hope they can get it all done. But, you know, I helped them as much as I could, answered a bunch of questions for them, and, you know, history questions, and then a bunch of questions about the schools. And, you know, not growing up here, I didn't know a whole heck of a lot about these one-room schoolhouses. So, I had to refer to Jane Dorgan's book. But there's, there's one, and I hope someone can clear it up for me at, at one point. There was a one-room schoolhouse on Shady Hill in South Groveland, which is supposedly off of Washington Street. And supposedly was the site where the Knights of Columbus went. And it, it just, you know, it's a mishmash to me. I mean, it just, I need someone to clear it up. A townie. An older townie.
I can't help you with that.
No, you're too young.
Well, I'm a townie, but I, I don't know that.
Yeah, but you're too young to know that, yeah.
Well, that's my parents. Maybe they'll know.
Your brother wouldn't know.
My father would.
You think he would?
Well, I mean, he grew up here, too, so.
Yeah. I mean, there were, there were two small houses at the, or schoolhouses at the South Groveland Fire Station site. There was a one-room schoolhouse in back of the two-room on that same site. I thought it was just one schoolhouse until I started digging. And then there was a one-room schoolhouse on the corner of Bear Hill Road. That's a house now. Does that sound right?
You're predating me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next up, we have the road commissioner petition from elected to appointed. Ready?
So, this has been, we've been trying to do this for maybe eight years.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to see it maybe get done this year with the town meeting election. And then it has to go to the ballot afterwards.
So, the town has to approve the change from elected to appointed at the town meeting, and then it has to go to the ballot question?
Right, it would be on the ballot also.
Okay. And this is something you support?
Oh, yeah, I support it 100%, I have. A lot of people probably didn't think I did, but I did.
Okay.
I, we're the only, there's like three towns left in Essex County that are elected for the road boss job. It's Raleigh, Georgetown, and Groveland.
Are the other towns looking to make it appointed as well? Do you know?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. But it's with the budget, and with my budget, and Chapter 90, and any snow overage, it's over a million dollars. So, elected person, one person running that with not as much oversight. If I was, if this position was appointed, and he, he would report, he or she would report to the selectman.
And you think that that would be beneficial for the town as far as management, where they would?
As far as management, and eventually, the town could expand to a DPW, which will be coming
Yeah.
in the near future. You know, the cemetery would be involved.
Would the tree warden be underneath that, too?
Well, that's, that would be the next thing. We'd want the tree warden also this year.
To be in appointed position along?
Appointed.
Okay.
Now, in Essex County, Groveland and Newbury are the only towns that elect the tree warden.
What are the towns that are left that don't have an appointed road commissioner?
Georgetown, Raleigh, and.
And Groveland.
So, those are the three communities that don't?
Yeah, they're the only three. Even in New Hampshire, New Hampshire used to be elected for years. Even most of the towns up there are, are appointed.
And it's primarily for the oversight, because the budget does.
Yeah, it's the oversight. And qualifications, too. Because it's changing with the storm water management, regulations coming in, a lot of other regulations. DOT is making paperwork harder, Mass DOT. A lot of paperwork now with Chapter 90. There's other grants out with what they called complete streets for improving the sidewalks.
Any idea how long it would take to find someone that we could pull from the pool of, for appointments?
I don't think it would take that. Maybe, it'd be six weeks, probably.
Yeah? Okay. Chad, any questions for you?
No.
Lisa, anything else?
Yes. Is there any way that you could put together something with just the bullet points that you just articulated? As the reason why it makes sense to have an appointed road commissioner? So that when people ask that question, we would have something? Do we already have that?
So, the Finance Board gave you guys a letter, which they articulated.
Oh, it's in that letter?
It's in the packet, no, I included it again in your packet this week.
Page eight, some bullet points.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, they sort of, because they've met with Bob, you know, from the Finance Board's, Board's perspective, you know, their three main issues are sound financial management, accountability, and expertise. So, they've actually met, they've researched this, and they've written up why they recommend it. And Bob concurred with sort of all of their reasons why they feel this position, especially given the oversight, the change in the laws, things like that, that it would be best to have an appointed person.
So, those sound sort of generic. I wonder if Bob could provide maybe the specifics for each of those? Like, okay, look, this is how much the budget is. He talked about the storm.
This guy in there, too.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty concise what they have on it.
Okay, okay. So, then, lastly, is there a way that we could put that on our website, or post it somewhere, so that people will have easy access to it? Prior to, will this be part of the warrant at town meeting?
So, this will probably be part of the Finance Board's letter to town meeting. We can't put it under warrant articles. You know, we could certainly put it as an appendix, but I think it will be part of their presentation to town meeting. But I can certainly post it, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wonder how we could get it out to the community, so they could see it as well.
Yep.
And I think it goes a long way, that this is something that you support, not something that we're deciding.
Well, when we've, when it's come to vote at town meeting before it's passed, you know, I've stood up and promoted it, but then at the ballot, it, it, it fails. But not by much, one year, it only failed by like 40 votes.
Is it the wording of the ballot question?
I don't know.
Or is it that people forget from the town meeting time to the actual time to vote?
I don't know. I think, I think you have a different group of people now in town, a younger group, that I think they'd vote for it.
Yeah, okay.
Now.
I got a question. Did you, did you make up the warrant articles yet?
They're the same ones that appeared in the warrant before, I just took them out.
Okay, I was just wondering if, if it, see, the town will vote to make the office of road commissioner, an appointed office to be known as the Highway Superintendent, to be filled by appointment of the Board of Selectment in accordance with General Laws 411B. Don't you think there should be the wording in there, a three-year appointment, or whatever it's gonna be, a one-year or three-year appointment? or, uh, whatever it's gonna be, a one-year or three-year appointment?
No, I don't. I think you could make that, or so that would be one, one year every year?
No, well, whether it be a three-year appointment, whatever, whatever your, uh, whatever. Well, you're elected for three years. Uh, would, would we be appointing that every year?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they do in West Newbury. Same thing. He's appointed in West, every year.
Yeah, if you make it appointed, it falls under all the regular, um, annual appointment requirements. So you could certainly extend, um, a longer appointment term if you so chose, um, but it would normally just be an annual appointment.
Because under the, um, the next one you're gonna, you, you probably talk about is the tree warden. From what I read, uh, under, uh, Chapter 41106, uh, that, that's a, a three-year appointment as specified, uh, under, uh, 41106. But I didn't see anything as far as for, uh, Superintendent of Streets or Road Commissioner.
Just, um, no, Superintendent of Streets would be every year.
Every year.
And then the tree warden, in most of the towns, the, uh, selectmen appoint either the Superintendent of Streets or someone that works for the Highway Department.
That was, that was my other question. Because an appointed, an appointed tree warden, you could get away with it worth an elected tree warden, but when you move to, uh, an appointed, don't you need a certified arborist or a, uh, based upon our population, we don't?
We don't have it. Ten thousand people would be certified arborists. We're not ten. We won't see ten thousand.
Oh, we're gonna see that.
Not this year.
Maybe not in my time, but maybe in yours.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe in your time.
So you, you could, if there's a highway position became open, you know, there was an opening, you could look for an arborist. You know, that's one of the qualifications.
But this is gonna cost, that's, that's gonna cost us more money. Right? And, uh, right now, we, uh, you get somebody, I know you're doing the, uh, tree warden within the Highway Department, but if we, uh, and, and we've been lucky in past years that we've been able to get people to, uh, to do the job. But my thing is, if you, if you're gonna, going to move it up to like a certified arborist, like you say, maybe in an opening, that, that's gonna cost us more money.
Well, we wouldn't do it though. We don't have to. I'm just saying, you have to have an arborist after ten thousand people. So now you just appoint the Highway Superintendent as the tree warden or, or someone that works in the Highway Department. Usually a lot of the towns, they just appoint the, uh, Highway Superintendent.
Right, which is what Bob and I spoke about because the, um, staff are all in a union, so we would have to negotiate to add a stipend or something if you made it one of the employees versus the boss of the department.
And it's, and it's really like a duplication. It's, you know, Tree One's plant tree removal and Highway is, um, emergency tree removal, uh, if it's in the way of a road. So, job, road job, it's a road project.
Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I, I, I think it makes tremendous sense on all fronts. I'm glad Mr. Akalian supports it. It's, um, it's overdue, and I'm glad to see, um, it being pushed now. Thank you for your honesty.
Yeah, that's good because, um, it is, it's better for the town. I mean...
I agree with you a hundred percent.
It's, this was a, a road commissioner, it was, it's kind of goes back to the eighteen hundreds, you know?
And you haven't had a horse and buggy in your stables for a long time, have you?
That's what I mean. And there was like three or four, three road commissioners years ago in Groveland. You know, there'd be a road commissioner down the south end of town and, but, I mean, those, that's back then, that a lot of the roads were gravel and just changed.
And, and you remember that?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No, we don't.
No, but I, I did go to the Little Red Schoolhouse for six months.
I think Claire wants to talk to you.
Yeah, I know. She's looking for some background information.
It was, uh, school overcrowding, so we had to go, we were in the, then we went to the Merrimack School and then they put the wing on the Main Street School.
Denise?
Yeah, I just wanted to articulate that, um, if this passes town meeting and the ballot this May, um, then the appointment would take effect the earlier of either Bob's choosing to retire or his term ending in May 2019. So, um, so we would have that in place if he chose to leave early.
Right. So if it does, everything goes good, it passes at the ballot too, then we, you could start a, like a commit, you know, the selectmen can interview.
Would you be willing to act as a consultant to us as far as, you know, getting the right person with the right knowledge and the right skill set?
But if someone comes in earlier, I, I wouldn't mind, you know, I'd leave.
Nobody wants you to leave. We're not kicking out the door.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, I wouldn't, if we had a good candidate and we didn't wanna lose him.
Yeah, I think we would be looking for your input, uh, for the job description.
Yeah.
As well as, you know, what to look for in a candidate's background and experience and that kind of thing. Because, I mean, other than driving other roads, I don't know the first thing about, you know, Highway Department or, you know, Road Commissioner or anything.
Yeah, the law, some of the towns are going towards someone with a little bit of an engineering background also, but...
Yeah, so I have a bunch of job descriptions and we can decide what qualifications you want when it comes to that.
Salisbury just hired an engineer. They had someone there like me, you know, and then...
Okay.
But they're DPW, they're more. I'd say you'd go with a hands-on person first maybe, and then until you moved into DPW, uh...
Okay, so does this cover the tree warden discussion too?
Unless you have any questions on that, yes.
Ed, you all set?
Yep.
Lisa?
All set.
Just go with the, appoint the Superintendent of the Tree Warden.
Bill?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the resigning of the conservation restriction for thirty-three Dewhurst Street, Center Street, and Main Street, previously approved on October thirtieth, twenty seventeen. The state's legal department made some de minimis changes. Previous versions did not formally grant the restrictions, only acknowledged it.
So Denise, I, I looked at this and it was like foreign language to me. Basically, it's just, um, a formality, basically. Our language wasn't exactly correct. They're modifying the language, but the intent is not, is not any different.
Correct. So I highlighted what's changed. You'll see it's very minimal changes. Um, a couple of things. They just, um, fine-tuned it the first page. They added Dewhurst Street and Main Street, which was not in the previous document. Um, really, the only, um, change was that one paragraph that they rewrote a little bit.
Is that thirteen?
It actually kept, yeah, it kept the intent of the article the same. Um, on page nine, um, they just re-sort of worded that. And then the biggest issue was, um, the signature page, the previous version stated that the Board of Selectment acknowledged town meeting voted. It never actually said we grant the conservation restriction. So really, very minor changes. Um, I didn't feel that it warranted Essex County Green Belt to come back here, um, 'cause it really does not change anything with the restriction.
So do we have to read that Section thirteen or?
It's up to you.
Can I just make a motion? And since it's part of the, part of the correspondence and with it, and if anyone wants to review it, it's available. Can I just make a motion that we accept the modifications made by the state's legal department related to the conservation restriction for thirty-three Dewhurst Street, Center Street, and Main Street that was previously approved on October thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen?
Do we get a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Uh, further discussion, I'll read that, just so it's recorded. Uh, such other non-prohibited activities or uses of the premises may be permitted with the prior approval of the grantee and the divisions provided that the grantee and the division has made a finding. Such finding to be documented in writing and kept on file at the Office of Grantee and the Division. That such activities are consistent with the reserved rights or as applicable, do not impair the conservation values and propose, propose purposes of this conservation restriction and where feasible result in net gain in conservation value of premises. So, any further discussion?
Who's Mr. Dempsey? He's at every meeting. Is he sick?
He's on vacation.
I was gonna say, he is, this is his bailiwick. I mean, and the one time he's on vacation. Who told him he could take vacation? I thought it was your turn to watch him. No, no questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Ed?
All right. No, I'm all set.
Okay, so we have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
So do we all have to sign that, or do I sign it?
Yes, so I'll just pass it down the board. Sign at the town, please.
Next up, we have Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream Late Night Events Request for Wednesday, July eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Request extension from ten PM to three AM. And Wednesday, August twenty-second, twenty eighteen, request extension from ten PM to two AM. So this was the item that we had a little bit of an issue with last year. I'm glad to see we're getting ahead of it this year. Um, I think everything, they've done all the paperwork ahead of time already.
Yes, so there's really no paperwork, 'cause we really haven't encountered something like this. Um, they came in, they're getting ready to open for the season, so they came in to pick up their common vic license that you all approved in December.
Yep.
We had a conversation. They know the dates that they would look, would be looking for, so we figured might as well just do it now. Um, that way, if there's any questions. Um, as you'll see, I did reach out to the police department. They have no objections. They've had no issues with these late night parties. Um, they do plan to open on those days. So this is the extension from ten PM until three AM and ten PM till two AM, but they will open at their normal hours of noon time. So on those days, they will be open from noon right through until three AM the next morning.
Is there, is there a need to have a detailed officer there?
Um, the police have not found a need to have one in the past.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on this? Ed?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Phil?
Will alcohol be served at these functions? Is it BYOB?
It's neither.
It's neither?
No, they open up late, they have a DJ, they have dancing, they do energy drinks, they have, they get some sponsors that provide some energy drinks and things like that.
Oh, cool.
It's family-friendly.
Cool. Anybody invited? Is invite only, uh?
Nope, it's open to the public. They post it on their Facebook page and advertise. Um, they specifically picked the second one because it's a week before schools start, so it's sort of an end of the summer bash. Um, and I don't know what the July date signifies, but...
No issues with the neighbors with the music or the late-night activity?
Nope. Not in the past anyways. They've had it, I think, two or three years now.
No fee?
Not just for this. They, they pay an annual common vic charge fee. If that's something you guys wanna look into, we certainly can. But we, we didn't have a process in place for special events. I just allowed it to continue.
Further questions?
Someone wanna make a motion then?
I make a motion that we accept Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream's Late Night Event Requests for Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from ten PM to three AM, and Wednesday, August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, from ten PM to two AM.
Do we get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I think we already had discussion. All those in favor?
Yes.
I'd like to thank them for getting ahead of us months in advance. That's a big help. Uh, next up, we have Volunteer of the Month nomination. I think, um, that was from Joe DeMore, right?
Yes.
Should I read that?
Um, you can. So we haven't had any other nominations, so you can read it. And then if the board votes it, I'll prepare a certificate for the next agenda.
Uh, from Joe DeMore, I'd like to nominate Kathy McValley?
Mackenbell.
Mackenbell, sounds...
Paschale from Groveland for diligently making homemade ser, scarves, hats, mittens, and organizing our neighbors and residents of Groveland all went along. She has delivered many personal care items and homemade items as described to the G A R Park on numerous Fridays to distribute to the poor and homeless people. She is a reliable source of needed item and had, needed items and has collected donations of clothing too. So, um, I actually did one of these, um, charity things with Joe about Christmas, and it's a great program. Um, very eye-opening and moving, and surprisingly how upbeat some of these people are, given their situation. So, um, Bill, any questions?
No, none.
Lisa?
No.
Ed?
Uh, no.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion. We nominate Kathy McValley, Paschale.
Pascal.
Pascal.
You could've helped us out beforehand.
For Groveland Volunteer of the Month.
Do we get a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Next up, we have the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget discussion. So, I went through the remaining part of the budget and did have some questions on some of the proposed budget increases. And I circled anything that was above a three percent total budget increase. And I asked Denise about some of this. So do you wanna kind of explain the overall meaning behind some of the increases? Or, you said that line items would increase, but the overall budget would, would generally not increase.
Yeah, so this year, um, in the past few years, we've asked departments to stay within a two percent total budget increase while we give a two percent salary increase. So it's been hard for some departments where we are primarily salary-driven. Um, this year, I granted a two and a half percent total budget increase. Um, some of the individual lines that you'll see, um, are really still adjustments because we're still only a few years out of being a total one expense line and breaking it down. So there's still sort of, um, you know, working through the learning curve of what should be spent out of which line items. So that's why a lot of, there, there's a lot of adjustments. So you'll see the total budget hasn't exceeded two and a half percent, um, but the individual line items may.
So, like on the insurance, um, spreadsheet, that went up five point six nine percent?
Yeah, so the insurance is, um, always at this time of year an unknown.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can tell you that good news for us is, um, we got the state's GIC insurance premiums last week, and they are pretty much level funded or, um, very minimal increases. So I actually, in my ongoing calculations, I've lowered that four hundred thousand down a little bit, and I've actually had to increase the property and casualty line up a little bit. Um, because as we, um, are filing claims, our costs are going up, deductibles are going up, um, and I still am not sure if we as a town are covering VZ's insurance, so I budgeted for that as well.
Okay.
Um, but that's why insurance, um, that's the main reason why it went up is that property and casualty, so it's over that fifteen thousand dollar additional premium of VZ Park.
Okay. And then when I was looking over the budget, proposed budget for the fire department, that has a total budget increase of almost thirty percent.
Yeah, so the fire department provided...
And I know that's a little bit different of an animal because of some of the requirements that they have and then some of the issues with some of the equipment. And I know there's a lot of things that factor into that, but when you see a thirty percent increase on the overall budget, it kinda skews to growth.
Right, but, so the fire department provided two budget requests. Um, the first one was a two point eleven percent increase.
Yep.
The other one was a thirty percent increase. Um, so the fire department representatives met with the Finance Board last Wednesday, um, and we did have some discussions during that, that, um, as I go through sort of the calculations, you know, not all of the lines will be able to increase to sort of the thirty percent level, but the Finance Board thinks specifically things that we've talked about in the past, um, their maintenance line, their equipment and, um, vehicle testing lines, uh, those really need to be looked at and separated. So the vehicle maintenance line should be separate from the required annual testing, which has not been the case.
Mm-hmm.
So for this current year, um, the money that was set aside for the testing of the air bottles, vehicles, hose, things like that, has actually already been spent on, um, vehicle maintenance. So we now need to find money to cover the required testing. So, in my opinion, and what I've explained to the fire department personnel, is we need to separate that because you should never be taking required annual inspection and testing money for other things.
Right. That should be a fixed budget, 'cause you know every year it's gonna be that.
Correct. And you need to make sure we have that money when the time comes.
Right.
Um, as the fire chief had articulated in the past years, a lot of the inspections happen at the end of the fiscal year, April and May. Um, we're actually testing, um, air bottles on Thursday, um, that we need to move some money around to cover because they don't have enough. Um, so, once we deal with the air bottles, then we'll still need to deal with the rest of their required testing because they've already spent that line item.
And, um, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
And, and I know that between Central and Cell Station, there's equipment that's aging. Um, and I'd like to get some kind of plan on how we're going to move forward and either drastically repair those vehicles or re- or replace them, because we can't do it all in one year. So we have to have a schedule of each year or every other year what we're planning to do with the most severe vehicles so we can make sure that those are functional and safe to be used.
Right, well, so one of the finance board's objectives in this department, as well as the highway department, has been to increase the vehicle maintenance line for those reasons. You do, you will see under, I think, Tab 31 is the capital plan, and you'll see how they have the replacement of vehicles sort of staggered, but it's significant, so, you know, $538,000 for an engine. The EMS vehicles, $85,000, $225,000. So every year, there's a significant request.
Right.
You know, and if there's a year that we don't have funds available, or we need to push something off, we need to make sure we have maintenance money available to make the repairs so that the equipment can remain in active status. So we've gone through and looked at it, like I said, we, my guess is the finance board will come in with a recommendation between the two budgets because they have looked at some of the lines that need to be increased. As you're well aware, firefighter wages are increasing because now we are going on every EMS call, and calls are actually dramatically increased. So we need to take that into consideration by increasing the firefighter wages line to account for these additional calls.
And just to be clear, so that people understand why that is, is that our Class 5 requirement is that the fire department goes out on every EMS call, correct?
Yes, so the board approved going to Class 5, and then Class 5 requires the fire department on every EMS call, yes. So, you know, I think we can come to some middle ground. Kurt, who is the Assistant Chief, has really been going through, looking at the expenditures of what is needed for this remaining fiscal year and what will be needed next year, so we can actually come up with some variation between the two budgets that will actually be something that will sustain the department and allow us to fit within our restraints of prop 2.5.
And I think on top of that, like I said, the vehicle portion, we need to get a better idea of where each vehicle stands in the rotation, how long it's been on service, what the major issues are. Is it something we need to look at replacing this year, next year, three years from now? Because, like I said, the pie is only so big, and we need to figure out what we're going to need to, if nothing else, save for so we can start looking at these vehicles that are either outdated or no longer sufficient.
Right, and when you look at a year like 2021 with the $538,000 engine,
Yeah.
the same year, capital's recommending a replacement of a six-ton highway truck at another $200,000.
Right.
You know, so...
So between that and then the school system coming online,
Correct.
you're going to have to be, you're going to fight for even less money.
Correct, so I do think that, you know, some of the vehicles should be looked at to see what can, you know, be repaired for a few more years, what you know is, you know, more priority than we cannot band-aid.
Even if you increase that maintenance line to make sure it gets repaired efficiently and not just band-aided.
Right, but some of them, I mean, some of them are, you know, 10-plus years old, so you can only band-aid them so much. But yes, it's definitely something we need to look at because we have a lot of old equipment that we've been pushing down the road.
Right, and then the only, I mean, I have two more things. So on the highway department, there is a total budget increase of 7.23%. I'm assuming a lot of that is snow and ice increase?
Oh, I wish she was still here. Yes and no, so the major driving factor was, which we've talked about, so he was requesting another person. And then he came to me and said, "Well, what if we do half a person in my department, half a person in facilities, so that we can get a full-time facilities person?" As of last week, he actually vacated his position and would like to see it fully funded as a facilities position and not a highway position. A couple of reasons for that are, we have spoken about, you know, how we share a position where half of it would be union, half of it wouldn't be. A union position comes with additional benefits that are defined in a contract. So he feels best that we remove that additional position of $42,000 out of his salary line. We increase the facilities to a full-time position, and then, as he's articulated a few times tonight, he would like to see a DPW here. I think that's the ultimate goal, centralizing sort of the cemetery facilities under the highway. At that point, you could have a pool of, say, six or seven people cross-trained to be able to handle different aspects of the highway. And then with a new DPW director or even highway superintendent, let them evaluate the need for any additional staff.
Okay.
So the snow and ice is, in his budget request, not increased. I can tell you that the finance board will be recommending an increase to that.
Yes, because we've already hit, we're already over.
We have, and they've actually done an analysis. We've been looking at that, and the average is we spend over $100,000 additional a year in snow and ice costs. So I, in my original projections to them, I bumped it up $20,000. When I reviewed it again today, right now, I'm bumping it up to $200,000 to try and get a workable number to see if we can comfortably add, you know, the $35 additional thousand dollars and then see, you know, where we come from that, if that's a comfortable number, if we need to continue to increase it, or if it's too much in this first year, we scale it back to make the balance, make the budget balance.
So if we overfund that line item, how do we have access to that, like in the summertime when we don't need it?
Yes, so...
Or do we fund it going forward, like if we're, have a $30,000 plus excess on it, do we fund that for the next year, and then next year's budget is cut by $30,000?
No, so it would function as any other line item. So if we put that at $200,000 and we have a miraculous winter and we only need $100,000,
Yeah.
that extra $100,000 could be used at the end of the year when we make all those into departmental transfers. A special town meeting could transfer out of it. It still is dedicated to snow and ice unless we transfer.
Okay.
Mike, could I go back to the fire department and do a follow-up question with you on that?
I don't know if I can answer it, but sure.
So going back, I don't see any change in the number of hours for the chief, and I don't know if the finance department made any recommendations about that, and whether, if that is something that we're entertaining as we begin to look at how to support the fire department and ensure that they're being adequately...
So are you looking for my opinion?
Well, I'm just wondering what the process would be.
Well, in my opinion, everything's on the table, so if that's something that we want to entertain, we should definitely keep it on there. I'm not saying no, I'm saying that that's something that should be an option too.
But does it have to go to town meeting?
Yes. Not to change the hours, to increase the salary, would have to be as part of this budget cycle.
Okay.
So, and I can tell you, the finance board did not discuss that or take a position on that. My guess is they feel that this board would first decide where you want to go with that position, and then they could weigh in on the recommendation. But that is something you should discuss, or at least, you know, if you wanted to increase that, so you had a budget number, and then you could at least have a ceiling of what not to exceed, that's something you could look into.
So maybe when we talk about the chief's position, when it's the next agenda item, I think maybe March 19th, we could discuss that then?
Yep. And I have two more. So on the health department, it says 6.51% increase?
Yes, so the health department also submitted two budget requests. One staying within their parameters and one adding additional hours to the staff.
Yep.
To two staff members. I can tell you, at this point, the finance board did not, they have not voted, but they, at this point, do not feel that it's a necessary increase to add additional hours. I'm not sure how they will actually vote on that, but that's what they are leaning towards. I would tend to agree with that. You know, I don't know, I think if you read the cover letter that was submitted and the goals that were submitted from the health department, they don't match the hour request. They talk about the goals of the health nurse and increasing some of the nurses' work, but they are requesting increased hours for the other two staff members, not the nurse.
And they didn't necessarily articulate the basis for the increase.
Correct, correct, so I do think the basis is just the employees ask for more hours. So at this point, unless something changes, the finance board, I do not think, is inclined to support that request.
Okay, and then the last one I had was unclassified?
Yep.
Medicare tax went up 31%?
Yep.
And then the total budget went up 20.19%?
Yep, so Medicare tax is obviously tied to wages.
Yep.
I've been playing around with that number as well, given where we are at this point in the fiscal year. I don't think it will need to go up quite that much. We will have a deficit this year. We've had a deficit the last few years because that line item has been underfunded. But in my last calculation, I think, right now, I have it at $65,000 based on where we're trending and including a 2% increase on salaries. And that is really the only, increased retirement is a final number. That is our true assessment from Essex County Retirement. OPEB, I do have it in there, but I do have it, once free cash is certified, it would be an item that would come from free cash because we cannot absorb that $85,000 within the budget.
Right.
And then the savings that we have under the unclassified is the streetlights. If you'll recall, the light department started changing all the streetlights to LED.
Yeah.
So we do see a savings of that. We will see a savings for the first few years. This first year is approximately a $7,000 savings to us.
But these other numbers under that unclassified, they're not driven by, we don't really have a lot of control over them?
Correct, correct.
Sorry, I took over. That's all I had.
No, no, that's what it's here for.
Anybody else have any questions on the budget stuff?
Not right now, but we still have other opportunities between now and...
Well, we have, the next meeting is kind of close.
In the past, we've had additional meetings scheduled specifically for the budget. Currently, you have the next meeting, which is March 19th, and then the following meeting, you would be scheduled to vote on everything. So...
So if I had a follow-up question to any of those, I would, I'd have the potential to raise it at the next meeting?
Yep.
Yes, and then, like I said, you certainly could look to schedule a night with nothing but the budget, which we've done in the past.
Yep. Bill, anything else?
Yeah, on your assumptions, on new growth.
Yep.
So your assumption is only $100,000, which is, if I look, it's the least amount in the last five years. You really, I know that's conservative, but you think that's being overly conservative?
I do, but new growth is really, fluctuates with the market, so if something were to happen, people would stop building. So I do expect it to be higher than that, but we don't want to overestimate and then not collect the revenue that we've planned for. So it's better to have a safe estimate there so that we can hopefully take in more and have excess funds.
There's only dip in '16. Every year, it seemed to have grown.
Right.
Motor vehicle excise tax, I'm wondering if, there's a little bump, and you're expecting another little bump, and I'm wondering if these would purchase new vehicles in that '16, '17 area, and now we're going to see decreasing values because as each year goes on, you know, the value goes down.
Yep, and excise is just like new growth. It depends with the market. If it's a good market, people buy new cars. If it's not, people don't. So, again, that's sort of a wild card based on how much turnover there is with vehicles in town.
And it looks like a lot of new vehicles were purchased in '16, '17.
Yes.
And unless they trade them in, we're going to get less money each year on those, on those.
Correct.
Interest income, what caused the big bump in '16, '17?
So I'd have to look, but likely that was, we had, the light department was building their building, so we will move it, I know it says 7, I should say 17. They, we were moving money from their stabilization into our general fund account to pay out the bills, and it was a significant amount of money that was moving through. It just added to the increased revenue.
So just a one-time?
Yeah, and I do think '18 will end higher than that estimate. We're not trending quite as high, but we are higher than the $7,500 estimate.
This custodian. Is there, have we looked into some kind of cleaning service that could, you know, farm it out?
We had a cleaning service. When I came here, it was not advantageous.
Are we going to pay this proposed person benefits?
So it would be, we would be requesting a full-time position. So what we were paying for a cleaning service would still be less with the full-time hours and benefits.
Really?
So we're going to pay less than we pay with the cleaning service?
We have saved money going to a employee versus a cleaning service.
Gotcha.
So the goal would be to continue to save money on the facility side. So right now, we spend a ridiculous amount of money on facilities, electrical, plumbing, things like that. So if we had someone with some skill set that could do, you know, minor work, we pay prevailing wage on everything we do for hired labor in those areas. So that would really be the goal, is to cut back on some of our building maintenance costs.
I'd love to see an analysis, just to sort of see the numbers based on sort of what we spend paying prevailing wage and what you predict would be different with that position, because I think that's definitely a value-added.
Oh, I mean, right now, even to change the ballast, we have to hire someone to come in, and, you know, and that's sort of very minor electrical work. You know, it's things like that that just, I just got a bill as we were sitting here, you know, for work that was done, and it's, you know, it's just, it's just taking up all of our repair of money. The buildings are very expensive to maintain, and we don't, we just don't have someone. So if there's a major issue, we had an issue with a crack in the foundation of the library. I had to bring in the highway department to do it, because we don't have a facilities person. If we were going to hire someone, it would have been too expensive, so they came in, they filled it up, they cemented it in.
Yeah, they probably just got hydraulic cement and filled it in and sealed it.
But I have to pull them off what they're doing elsewhere in town to do things like that.
You can call me, I'll come to it.
Our front steps are deteriorating. I have to wait for the highway to free up time. We just don't have people, and I don't have the money to keep hiring people at prevailing wage to maintain these buildings. So I can certainly do that. It would actually be an easy analysis, I think.
All set, Bill?
Just looking at the assessors. Looks like they have a contract coming due in 2020.
Yep.
Have they, is this something that we can start to look at now to see if we can source another vendor to keep this, to hold the price exactly where it is now? And maybe extend the contract out?
We can. I don't really envision a huge increase in that. That's really for our appraiser, who does all of the assessments. Unless he were to resign or retire or choose not to accept the business, I really don't see it increasing dramatically.
That's it for me now. Mr. Chair.
Ed? Yeah, just, I think we need to take a closer look at the water department. Their budget request is way up. Now, just a follow-up, we got the meeting in two weeks. Is the, is the finance board going to be able to speak to these departments and get that information back so that we can, we can take a look at it? Because in one month, we have to approve the budget. But we certainly do need time to sit down and maybe question some of these departments and get them in to explain something.
Yeah, I mean, I'm waiting for you guys to say who you want to meet with. The finance board's meeting with three and four departments every time they meet. So they have pretty much gone through the first half of departments. On the water department, water and sewer, they do have next Monday, actually in this room, they're having their rate-setting hearing on their new proposed rates. That is next Monday, the 12th. Then the water department is meeting with the finance board on the 14th. But no, they have been actively meeting, and they do have a schedule. They've requested to meet with all departments. Some departments gave some pushback. So Kathy Castanella is the chair, put out a message that, you know, it's not required, but they will extend the offer. If someone chooses not to meet with them, then they will make their decisions based on their review of the budget. So one thing on the water and sewer department, I will just articulate. The water and sewer laborers have decided to form a union, so they have joined the Teamsters Union. We spent several weeks negotiating with the Teamsters on a draft contract, which is very similar to our current highway contract, which is also a Teamsters Union. Once I have a draft contract back, I will meet with you all to go over that contract. But one of the biggest issues was the wages in the water and sewer department as far as the laborers are concerned. They were well under the marketplace. We did an extensive survey of similar positions and qualifications. They were well under market and actually well below the lowest highway laborer. So even just to bring them up to sort of an average, not even at the high end and not at the very minimum end, but it was a significant increase in salaries, just to bring them up to really where they should be in the marketplace. So that's primarily one of the biggest increases. The other one is the Haverhill wastewater agreement. A 20-year agreement is up, and that is the basis for the large increase on the sewer side, is the prices they got back from Haverhill after negotiating that. And that is the basis for the large increase on the sewer side, is the prices they got back from Haverhill after negotiating that have increased.
Well, maybe we could get, for the next meeting, we could get a list of departments that have met with the finance board, and I'd rather speak with them after they've met with the finance board and see what the finance board recommendations are or suggestions. And then we could pick and choose the departments that we want to talk to.
Yeah, so the only problem is the finance board's meeting, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, I think are their next two meetings, and then they plan to wrap it up. I don't think they're meeting on the twenty-first. So those will be their final two meetings, and then they will be ready to make their recommendations. Actually, we are meeting on the twenty-first. So the fourteenth and the twenty-first are the next two meetings. So in all likelihood, after the twenty-first, they may have recommendations for this board, and then you could review them. But again, that only leaves the meeting on the second where we need to really finalize before the warrant is final. So I can certainly speak to Kathy about when they're planning to do their recommendations, but that should be their final departmental meeting. And on that night, actually, I think right now, they're only scheduled to meet with the schools. I think all departments will be done by the fourteenth. And just the schools and any remaining departments that couldn't make it on another night are scheduled for the twenty-first. So they should be in pretty good shape.
Almost sounds like we should take the suggestion, what state organization was it that thought about moving the town meeting and election to later on so we'd have a better handle on the finances. And we are finalizing this stuff probably way too early.
Yes.
We haven't gotten, when did the cherry sheets come in?
We have, well, we only have the governor's budget numbers. So we don't have, the House and Senate haven't voted on their versions. So basically, my, I pretty much level funded state aid, except unrestricted aid, the governor. I think it went up thirty thousand in his recommendation. So I'm using that in my revenue projection, but we won't know that until probably after town meeting.
And what's the date of town meeting?
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
Okay.
With the election, May seventh.
Thank you.
Yes. Lisa, you all set on budget? Okay. Moving on to vote to the board, we have the minutes from February fifth, twenty-eighteen. Do they want to make a motion on those?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we stop?
No.
No.
I just figured it's best under the budget item instead of the, I just wanted to go over snow and ice a little bit because I gave you guys some reports on snow and ice. So it might be better to just touch upon that quickly before we move on.
Isn't that a thing under vote to the board?
Well, that's on the deficit. I mean, if you want to take it up under that, I just figured we could go over a little, whatever you'd like to do.
No, no, that's fine.
So I gave you guys a breakdown of this FY eighteen snow and ice budget of where we stand. And then, yes, under votes of the board, you do have a request for deficit spending from the road commissioner. So the numbers and the estimate that we paid actually in this warrant came in a little lower. So right now, if you authorize a sixty-five thousand, we will have approximately eleven thousand dollars left. We are expecting now a significant snowstorm on Wednesday, and they did go out about three-thirty or four o'clock this morning. So those two events plus one other bill will leave us with about eleven thousand, you know, in room to play. Hopefully, that will be it. The storm on Wednesday is mainly predicted, of course, after hours, which would be on overtime, not during their normal schedule. But I did give you all, because I think it's important to see the breakdown by vendor so you can actually see what we're spending our money on for snow and ice. So out of the current hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar budget, ninety-two thousand of it is materials alone. Salt, sand, fuel, that is strictly the materials we need to maintain the roads. Sixteen thousand is parts and repairs, and that is, you know, we have to get the blades sharpened, the blades repaired, parts for the plows every year. The payroll, which is overtime, was twenty-six thousand so far, and for our outside vendors is thirty-one thousand. One thing to note going through the report, you'll see some outside vendors with small wages. For example, on the second page, Ed Lemieux is down there. We actually bring him in, but he uses our equipment. So if we have people that can come in and use our existing equipment, we only pay them an hourly rate. Whereas other vendors, we have to pay for them to use their equipment, and there's actually a cost for that. So again, I just thought it was important to see that the majority of our money is strictly on materials.
Is there any way to get more for that line item? Like, is that the best price we can get for those materials?
Yes, so we're under bid. So we, for the salt and the sand, actually, sand, I think we do our own. The salt, we're in a consortium. So we get, it's actually, which is, I find kind of funny, because it's Morton's salt. So that's where we get the, our primary salt is from Morton's. We did order a few times from a different vendor because before the January storm, Morton's was running low, and we were afraid we weren't going to be able to get it. So we ordered, oh, from Eastern Minerals. They were the second bidder on the consortium, and it cost us, again, minimally more, but Morton's by far is the lowest price for us.
Okay.
The de-icer, we spend Allstate's asphalt there under contract with us, so we bid that. So again, I just, you know, the majority of our money is going to materials. And we only call outside vendors when it's absolutely necessary. We try and deal with the in-house vendors or some of the vendors that will come in and use our equipment. But at a, in an urgent situation or something that we just can't handle, is when he'll call in companies with their trucks to come in.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, unless anyone has a question on snow and ice.
Is that what you said to us, right?
Yes, it's in the packet. It is further along. I do have it under the vote section where the deficit letter is. But since we were talking about the budget, I just figured I'd talk about it.
All right, vote to the board. We have minutes from the February fifth, twenty-eighteen meeting. Someone make a motion on that?
I would make a motion that we accept the minutes from February fifth of two thousand eighteen.
You get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll have those stand over there.
Executive session minutes from February fifth, twenty-eighteen.
So I would like to make a request for an amendment to those meeting minutes. I'd like them to reflect sort of the analysis that went into making the decision to offer the settlement that we explored other ways to get the money back that was owed to the town. If we could add some language in there, that town council advised us that the cost to...
Okay.
Because I think right now, it doesn't articulate that there would have been a cost.
The potential cost?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen some questions presented about that where it's not known that potential cost could be exceptionally higher.
So I will revise those and put them on your next agenda.
Thank you.
Then we have the executive session minutes from February twelfth, twenty-eighteen.
I'll make a motion for a rough passage.
You get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And then we have the road commissioner's request dated two-twenty-six.
I just, did you vote on the two-twelve?
Yeah.
Come on, Bill. All set?
Yes.
All set.
Road commissioner's request dated two-twenty-six eighteen to deficit spend fiscal year eighteen snow and ice line item by sixty-five thousand. Denise just clarified all that for us. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the road commissioner's request to deficit spend FY eighteen snow and ice line item by sixty-five thousand.
You get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bill?
Just getting back to your snow and ice expenditures, I noticed that we're buying parts from nine different people. Is there any, is there any possible way to get a greater economy of scales and get better pricing if we consolidated some of these vendors to two or three maybe as opposed to nine?
Yes, although parts is generic for accounts payable, but they're not all basic parts. So Donovan Spring Company of plow-specific, so that's where we get our plow parts.
Right. I'm just looking at like Auto Fair, Commonwealth Motors, J.C. Madigan.
Yep.
Hydraulic Napa, New Hampshire Parts, Pearson Hardware. I'm wondering if we could buy all these things from maybe one or two suppliers, we might be able to, you know, leverage that volume into better pricing.
Yeah, I can certainly see. I mean, usually, those types of parts are, something went, we drive there, we pick it up, whoever has it.
You guys don't use Grainger at all?
Madigan you won't be able to do. I know Madigan specializes in hydraulic fitting, so they're probably taking broken hoses and things like that.
Yes, and Jordan Equipment is all plow blades and plow specific to the plow itself. I mean, I could certainly see, again, I don't really know why. My guess is we're like, Pearson had one, Samson Fastener had one. I'm guessing those are a specific part that like Napa didn't carry. But I can ask. Commonwealth Motors is our truck. That's where we got our, the truck, so they must have had to go there and either pay for something that was done.
Right, right.
But I can ask.
See if there's any opportunity for savings. That's it. Only question.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Next up for old business, I think this would come under old business. I had a resident stop me the other day asking for a streetlight on Center Street. One of the corners there doesn't have, probably a good distance, three or four poles on each side, doesn't have a light on it. I think it's pole sixty-seven and a half.
So you filed the official request for the resident? Normally, they have to put something in writing.
I did ask them to put something to you.
Okay.
I don't know if they're actually going to follow through with it, but I figured I'd mention it.
Okay.
So I guess we could see if they actually follow through with the request that I did ask them to email over to you to request it. But in the event that they don't, I wanted to bring it up that it is pretty dark on that corner.
Okay.
And I think it'd be helpful to have a street light on. So we'll see what happens, but, Bill?
While you're under discussion of streetlights, has anybody noticed that the new lights don't seem as bright as the old lights?
I think they shine differently than the old lights.
Yeah, they shine less.
No, I think the, I think the...
I think they're more focused.
Yeah, I think they're more narrow at the bottom where the old lights expanded more at a higher altitude.
I noticed on my street that the old streetlights, it seems like when they put in the new ones, it's a lot darker now. I've had to put in lights, light to compensate.
I don't know if that's because of their LED or not, but I know that they're not as wide shining as the old ones.
Maybe that's, maybe it's a combination of the two. Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But if they don't follow up, then we'll figure out how to move forward with the pole sixty-seven and a half. I think that was the number. And then for myself, under old business, Lisa and I did meet with the fire department Tuesday night. That was a really good, honest discussion that we had with them. They shared a lot of information that was helpful for me to understand some of their concerns and their roles and their path forward. Some of the follow-up conversations were equally beneficial for options to move forward with the fire department. So I thought that that was an excellent use of time, and I would like to continue to have those open discussions so we can make sure that the roles of communication stay open and we continue to move the fire department forward. So I just want to thank them for inviting us over there for their night that is normally set aside for training. And again, I think it was extremely beneficial for myself, Lisa, and Denise was also there to actually get an idea of, you know, what they're thinking, what they see on various options and the various topics that we discussed, so.
And they had a list of twenty questions that I think Denise, you could probably provide if anyone's interested in seeing.
Yep.
I actually have those here. Did you want to?
I don't know.
And then I'll give them to Bill.
Oh, I probably have a couple.
Yeah. Which were the questions, was it twenty?
Yes, twenty.
Yeah, there was twenty questions that they had written up and provided for us to kind of walk through and have a discussion on. So it was pretty concise and pretty...
Yeah, but if I was in there, then I won't pay attention.
Pretty direct on what they wanted to kind of go over. So it was, it was a good meeting.
As a follow-up, Mike, do you know if there's any plan for them to meet with the police department to sort of discuss?
I don't know if there's one set. I did talk with Chief Gillen about the follow-up after the fire department meeting and, you know, trying to get everybody on the same conversation, on the same page, to make sure everyone is working together. And he is all for that, so maybe that's something that we undertake as far as setting up a time, one or two of us, because we can't have all of us without open meeting law and agendas and all that stuff. So maybe it'd be two other people besides us, since we had that first meeting. Maybe two other members can do that with the police and the fire department, just to make sure the conversations and the communications stay open.
And as a, as a follow-up to that, can I respectfully request that the, is it zone with class five?
Class five.
That that agreement that we make sure that Chief Gillen has a copy of that, do we know if he has a copy of it right now?
I don't believe so, and I do think, which we've talked about before, and we talked about a little bit at that meeting last week, I think one of the priorities should be to get police, fire, this board, and Trinity to talk about the EMS zone plan because there were some items that I know, after speaking with Trinity, they were not aware of, specifically the requirements around the response time and things like that.
Right.
So I think we should start that communication as well.
So I feel like the starting place is making sure that all the entities at least have a copy of it so that when we do come together to talk, they will at least have had an opportunity to review that.
Yes, so we don't have the most recent one that you guys voted that was submitted to the state. So we have to get them to approve it, and then we can forward that out once that's approved. Because it made some changes in that last one.
How could we get that?
I can talk to Brian, who's the one who did it. I don't know if, I know when the state does it, they will send a copy out to the parties, but I can get a copy. I can say Brian has a copy.
I just think it's important, particularly for the police department and Trinity to have a copy of that. Because I feel like they're sort of operating blindly without having that.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's not just communication between the board and the fire department. It's the board, the fire department, the police department, Trinity, you know, anybody else who should be involved in those conversations, so.
And I can tell you that I spoke with Chief Gillen this morning regarding an email that I had sent all of you. There's some school safety training. He has been in contact with the Assistant Chief Rashala about that and about the fire department's involvement. So he has reached out to communicate on that.
And that was one of the things that came out of that Tuesday meeting. So that, good.
Yep.
Do we know if they were able to get some seats to that?
No, that's a separate training. So that's the one that's being put on at Pentucket High School. This one, they're actually conducting at Bagnell, and they're opening it up to town employees, library employees, et cetera. But they did reach out to the fire department.
Okay, so that was it for me. Bill, anything on old business?
No, I'm good this week. Thank you.
Lisa?
I think we've already talked a little bit about, well, actually, what's the status of the marijuana moratorium? Didn't we have to have a public meeting before that could be?
Yes, so this board, though, cannot sponsor zoning articles. So I submitted that to Jim Freer, who's the chairman of the planning board. He has to hold, the planning board has to hold the public hearing. So he is aware of the timeline. He is aware that this board would like it for the annual town meeting, and he plans to hold a public hearing to formally submit it for the warrant.
Okay. I think that's, so I know the library, there's been some email exchanges regarding the director's position. What's the stat, where do we stand on that right now?
The same place we were when those emails were going around.
Okay.
They have a director, don't they?
Excuse me, not a director. It's... Youth services. Can you articulate where, well, if it's okay with the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you articulate where we are with that position?
Okay, I'm Lee Thomas. Yeah, the, first of all, let me just point out that according to state regulations, the library is open, doesn't have to be open as much as it is. We have between twelve and fifteen hours a week more than we have to by state law, which is, and so because we're short on people, it's kind of a strain on the staff. And when Darcy was, when Jan Vogt left last summer, Darcy was appointed the interim director, but she's also the youth services director, and she was doing both jobs. She's, now that she's permanently the director, she's focusing more on that and doing less on the youth services. So what we're hoping is that we can really facilitate getting the youth services director in, particularly because summer's a big part of their, what they do. And they like, I mean, the adult services director's already doing her summer plans now. And we would like to have, and it's kind of, I think it's kind of unfair to ask Darcy to do, be the director and do the planning for the summer. So I'm hoping that we can facilitate the process.
So the position's been posted? So the position's been posted.
It's been posted.
And resumes have been received?
They were received right after we posted, but Darcy told me today that she hasn't gotten any in several weeks, so we're not sure why that is.
She's gotten every resume that's come in.
Okay, so it doesn't have come in, is that...
We haven't gotten, I sent her an email actually this morning with resumes that came in over the weekend.
Oh, okay.
First thing this morning.
Okay.
Okay.
So she has every resume that's come in, we've actually gotten quite a few of them.
Okay, so then, so...
So then the next step is...
The next step is to evaluate the resumes according, I mean, that's, part of the reason we wanted to have a director is because the direct, that's the director's job is to, is to evaluate and decide who the best person is for that position, and then present it to the board second.
So, my understanding in sort of talking to the finance director is that the protocol right now is that Darcy would make recommendations about who to interview, and the personnel director can be involved in that process, but that based on sort of some policy changes that happened during a previous board, I think the personnel director does have a role of ensuring that certain protocols are followed.
Right.
Because the, the finance director is also the personnel person.
Right.
To ensure that all those files are kept in terms of, you know, resumes, all, all the sort of, and when I was on the library board, I'm not sure this was happening, there's a central repository for all the documentation for each employee. So, it sounds to me like the next, and correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, it sounds to me like the next step is for the library director to identify the individuals that she would like to interview.
Right.
Share that with Denise, and then the interviews would be set up.
Right.
And then after those interviews, Darcy would make a recommendation to Denise about who they would like to hire.
Yes, so I've actually been waiting to meet with Darcy for well over a month to talk about that process. She has not met with me because of the Board of Trustees, so we've been trying to meet to discuss that process and move this along.
Well, that's, we want to make sure that the process is clear.
Okay.
So...
Does that seem clear?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me, yeah.
Okay, so can you encourage her to reach out to Denise?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this a full-time position with benefits?
Yes.
Yes.
So it, yeah, we, we need to make sure that all our ducks are in a row as far as legal compliance and things like that, so that, we're actually, the town pays for the salary, right, not the Board of Trusted, the library trustees?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, but, but sort of like...
The town pays the salary, not the trustees?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so the town is real legally responsible for making sure that person is...
Well, the town is legal, legally responsible for the payroll piece, but MVLC does have some different guidelines than sort of some other town positions, but I think what Denise is talking about and what we've talked about tonight is, is consistent with that, which is that Darcy does make the recommendation about who to hire, but that all the paperwork sort of goes through Denise.
Right.
And Denise did do the posting, so I think, does that, does that sound?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that it for old business, for you? Thanks, Lee.
Yeah, I just, the, I'm, because it wasn't real clear what the process would be, I told Darcy to wait until we had a chance to have this conversation, so.
Yeah, I did articulate the process, though, in an email to Darcy exactly what we just talked about, so.
Okay.
It should have been clear, but that's, that's the holdup, is that's why we haven't met.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So we're under old business right now? Okay, I think I'm good.
No, I'm all set with old business.
Mike, would you like me to read Bill's letter under old business or Selectmen's time?
Your call.
It's your call.
All right, read it now. I'm forward moving.
Just because you did talk about it a little bit under some other item, so this is a letter from Selectman Bill Dunn, who asked me to read this aloud. It's dated March 2nd, addressed to the Groveland Board of Selectmen. "Due to my absence of tonight's meeting, I am writing the Board of Selectmen of my interest in working with the chief, I'm sorry, with the fire department on improving communications and strategizing on a plan for a new fire chief. After meeting with the BOS Chair and a rep from the fire department, it is very clear to me there is a real need to improve our fire department. For example, there is multiple equipment that is unsafe and outdated. We need to build a triangle from the BOS to South Station Captain and to the North Station Captain, which then information can be filtered between all parties through these three points. It is imperative that we run this department as a business. This starts with the chief at the top, who can communicate the needs of the equipment, the needs of personnel, budgeting, buildings, and long-term forecasting of the department's capital improvements. It is my view, if we start at the top and build down, this will improve department morale, police communication, and Board of Selectmen knowledge of department needs and costs, and add better communication to the citizens of what the department does for them over and above EMS and fire calls. I believe we should hold off as a board on any decision being made on behalf of the fire department until we put the right protocol in place. This will benefit our community. Thanks for the consideration, William Dunn, Selectman."
Okay.
So can I just follow up on that?
Yep.
Maybe at some point, and we could discuss this at the March, maybe it makes sense to form a subcommittee on the fire department that would include maybe a member of this board along with fire department members, and maybe even if someone from the community wants to be involved to sort of strategize moving forward. I know that we're, we're going to talk about the interim piece, but I just put that out there as a potential, and if nobody's open to it, that's fine?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an option, I just, I think it, where it's one of the major departments in town with one of the bigger budgets, I think it's, it behooves us to have everyone involved as much as possible, not just one person, but...
Okay.
And I will say, you did at the meeting last week, kind of encouraged the fire department to create sort of their own committee to present some recommendations.
Yes.
I would say at this point, I think it's important for everyone to communicate with each other. You know, it's fine if you want to have a point person or a group, but I do think the whole board should be involved.
Right.
And the whole fire department.
So maybe we can set up...
This should be an avenue of some sort, but I think, right, everyone should be part of the discussion, not just the top tier for the fire department and one board member and then maybe a resident. It should be everybody, because I think it's, I think it's that important that the fire department know what we're thinking as a board individually, and then what we're think, what the fire department's thinking individually and as a whole department. Because there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of different personalities, and there's a lot of ideas and history, so I think keeping as much as that open between everybody is going to be important going forward.
So I don't disagree with that. I guess what I'm just wondering, is there a way to formalize, you know, maybe next time we meet, we're going to talk on this date and this date, and, you know, sort of invite the fire department to sort of submit stuff for the board to review in a more formal way, because right now we've...
Yeah, there should be a schedule, yeah. It shouldn't just be like, you know, let's try and meet sometime in May. It should be like, let's meet every month or every third week or something to make sure that those communication lines stay open.
Yeah, so maybe we can discuss that of the...
Yep. Selectmen reports, Ed, do you have anything for that?
No, I don't.
Lisa?
I have a few things. Any update, actually, excuse me, Elm Square, we've not had any meetings, so there's no update with regard to Elm Square. That's it.
Bill?
We haven't had a meeting with the building committee since the vote we had to shave it down from 10 options to four.
I think we meet next week.
So we meet next week, yeah, it'd be the second Tuesday, so we're in a holding pattern.
Can I ask a question in that section? Denise, any status update on the personal advisory group?
So they've been meeting, I'm actually meeting with them next Monday, the 12th. They want to go through, I provided them our current personnel bylaw. Over the years, Town Council has spent many hours at the town's expense of providing recommendations that were never included, so I provided those to the board. I've provided some other items that people have sort of talked about, so I'm going to meet with them and sort of go over, you know, Town Council's version. We're going to take out some of those items that we're going to do as separate policies. So they are actively meeting. I know their plan is to meet every other Monday from this board, so that if I, if they have questions for me, I can attend. So next Monday is their next. They haven't organized, they don't have a, they don't have a chair, though.
Okay, so they're not doing meeting minutes yet?
They have a secretary.
Okay.
So they have a secretary who did their first meeting minutes, but they really didn't organize other than that.
So what will be, what could be the mechanism for us to get a copy of their meeting minutes?
Yes, so I can get them to you, I mean, they get posted on our website, so I can certainly forward them to you. I don't think the first meeting is really relevant at this point, but once they start really dissecting the policy, I can make sure you guys get copies.
Thank you.
Do you need to leave? Moving on to correspondence, we have the minutes from February 20th, 2018. We have the email from Joe Demore regarding his decision not to seek reappointment for the finance board. Thank you from, a thank you note from the Town of West Newbury Board of Selectmen for the accommodations of the paged school students as a result of the flood damage at the school. And Denise already read the letter from Bill Dunn regarding his interest in working with the fire department to improve communications. So now we're on to finance director's time.
And I don't have anything else for you.
Look at that. Moving on to Selectmen's time, Bill?
It's me falling through old business, too, so it, maybe it crosses. Spring is coming fast. Pines, multi-use facility, has anybody taken out permits so we know who wants to use it, when? Can we get the recreation committee back in here in the next couple of meetings to discuss where they are? Because there's going to be a whole host of people want to use that field in very short order.
Yes, I could tell you, permits have already started being pulled. Softball submitted their request, but their schedule's pretty much solid. I have had a request for the utility field, but after my last conversation with Mike Houghton, which granted, it's been some time now, but that utility field will not be accessible this entire season, because their plan is, once the weather starts to improve, they're going to spread that loom, they're going to start working on that more actively, so that entire utility field will be out.
For all spring, all summer, and all fall? Is that currently where the football players practice? Have we, has that been communicated to?
I don't know, but that's where lacrosse has been, that's where the football team has been.
So if that's not used, we, we should somehow get that word out to the, these groups that have been using it, saying this field's not going to be available, you need to move rapidly to find alternative venues for your practices, because some of it won't be easy.
Yep.
Get that out, the sooner the better. Washington Park, drove by there the other day, a lot of aggregate barriers, anybody taken out a permit on Washington Park yet?
I talked to Joe Campbell today, he came in to get the paperwork. Their plan is to start right around April 1st. We did have a very brief discussion on the drainage. I did recommend that he circle back through the parties that may come to this board, as we talked about a few weeks ago, I don't know if it was in here or not. The highway department had to put some barriers down there to stop the flooding, so they are planning to address the drainage in the spring, because it really needs to be fixed on a more permanent basis.
Who's planning on?
The highway department.
The spring of what year?
This year.
Spring of this year. Okay, so they're going to leave the bottoms down the pine to go work at the drainage at the...
Well, the drainage is a public safety matter. The police have gotten involved, it's a bad, it's bad, so that has to be a priority, but they can't do that in the winter.
Right. No, they're not going to be able to do that this week either with this snow.
No, so that has been a priority. I, I did hear today through Joe, though, that there was another plan in place for some work down there, so I don't know if this board really needs to have that conversation as to who is going to handle what down there, but it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed right, so that we don't have these issues.
I've heard the same thing. I wonder if we can get those parties together so they agree on the plan of action, so that after it's done, it's not finger pointing. It should have been this way, it should have been that way.
Yes, I mean, I will say, I did speak with Bob today, you know, he would just assume that they do it because their plan, the highways' plan is to put drainage in and run it down